Open it up.
All set to go.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the September 15th Town Council meeting to order. Donna's not in yet.
One second. I'm just seeing if this is her.
And we're just waiting on some technical issues to get somebody into our meeting for those of you who are in attendance. All right, so we're gonna move forward. So all votes tonight will be be a roll call. If you have any questions or comments, you can text Sue Semino, who is the clerk of the council, or her number is. And we'll put those up in the chat feature as well as all the other ways you can get in touch with the council, either during the meeting or after. But for the evening, you can use the chat feature on the Zoom meeting. If it's appropriate, if we can get to it during the meeting, I will address those items in that. If not, we will address them at a later date after the meeting. Or you can text Sue Semino at 339-987-2726 to email the entire council. One email will go to all nine members of the council, including the clerk of the council. It's to towncouncil@braintreema.gov. And Clerk Semino, roll call vote to open this meeting, please. Donna Connors is here. Great.
Councilor Erica.
Here.
Councilor Connors.
Donna, you gotta unmute. Yep.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilor Flaherty.
Here.
Councilor Hume.
Yeah.
Councilor Mackin.
Yeah.
Councilor O'Brien.
Present.
Councilor Ringus.
Yep.
Councilor Ryan.
Here.
Councilor Sasha.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to announcements from the Director of Municipal Licenses and Inspections, Mary Beth McGrath. The town of Braintree is sponsoring a walk-in seasonal flu clinic this year that will take place on Sunday, October 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It will be located in the Town Hall parking lot at 1 JFK Memorial Drive. In the event to rain, this event will be moved indoors. It is a first come, first served, and it is only available, it is free to Braintree residents, 18 years of age and older. Residents are asked to bring their health insurance card. So we thank the town and Mayor Beth McGrath and her department for hosting that. Councilor Connors, you have your hand raised. Is that?
Oh, that's for an announcement.
Okay. And the earlier this year, I asked our auditors to conduct a review of the Peterson poll. That is in a draft format now with, that is being finalized. There's some input from those who were involved, the mayor's office and the council solicitor being those individuals. Those responses will be incorporated to the final final version, and that will be on our next, the plan is to have it on our next council meeting agenda. Councilor Connors, I believe you had an announcement.
Yes. So, thank you, Madam President. As redicent may or may not be aware, last Friday, a gasket failure at the compressor station away led to an unplanned release of gas, causing the workers to trigger a manual emergency shutdown. The result was an estimated 265,000 standard cubic feet of gas being vented at ground level from the station. Many Braintree residents were made aware of the incident through sources other than the town of Braintree. There have been emails, calls, and conversation as to how Braintree can put an alert system in place in case of an unplanned release or incident. In coordination with the mayor's office, we would like to announce that an alert system is being put in place that will allow residents to opt in and receive alerts of unplanned releases or incidents at the station. More information will be forthcoming from the mayor's office, and the town website will be updated to allow residents to sign up for these alerts. I would encourage every resident to sign up for the alert and spread the word to family and friends in the area.
Thank you, Councilor Connors. I just want to add to that. I had reached out to the Solicitor Tab, Chief of Staff Tab, requesting that any update and notification, if a notification was or was not done, which we do know a notification was not done, it will be on next meeting's agenda, which is October 6th. I'm also going to invite FRACs and the East Braintree Civic Association, as well as any other members who want to attend in that. It is, this is not only harmful to the residents of East Braintree, but all residents of Braintree. And I'm still shocked that this is moving forward and this plan is going through. So that will be on our next meeting agenda. Thank you, Councilor Connors, for bringing that forward. Do any other councilors have an announcement? Councilor Erica.
Thank you, Madam President. On a hopefully somewhat lighter note, I just wanted to remind everyone, school starts tomorrow in town, and I know it has been an extraordinarily stressful, difficult, tough summer for both our school department and the school committee, as they've been planning for the beginning of classes. So, not only as a counselor, but also as a parent, I just wanted to acknowledge them publicly, thank them, and our public health department for all of the work that they've done over the last six months, really, to get everybody ready to start tomorrow. So, thank you.
Any other counselor with an announcement? Okay, we are moving on to communications and reports from the mayor's town and boards. And it says item 03420, "Council President, the Committee for Dead Exclusion for Braintree Schools will take up any action relative there, too." I ask that be placed on the agenda, as you are all aware. A special election is taking place Saturday, September 26th. That is the special election for our schools. There are four ballot questions that are on it, specifically to the infrastructure and South Middle School, as well as other items. We do have the vote yes for our schools here with us tonight, Ms. Lisa Heager and Mike Carroll. I'll let them do their presentation in a minute, but I just want to give a little bit of background on how we got to where we are, and I'm sure there's others who want to add to this. But this is, so with the previous administration under the former Mayor Sullivan and Dr. Frank Hackett, as well as the school committee, School Building Committee, which I have served on, there's been a plan and talk in place for years to address the overcrowding of the schools and the infrastructure. We know our buildings are aging. The town always committed to the operating budget and the capital budget. There was a million dollars put in place specifically in the capital budget for our schools. But that million dollars, as you can imagine, wasn't enough. We did part, many partners, partnered with the Mass School Building Authority, which is the MSBA, which is a state organization. They partners with communities to renovate schools. We've been very fortunate to partner with MSBA on multiple school projects. We did the South Middle School project, a smaller project years ago. That was a $3 million project that replaced the windows, boilers, then unit ventilators in all the classrooms, upgraded that school. We've done boilers, we've done windows, we've done lighting, the green repair projects throughout all of our schools, all the elementary schools, middle schools, and high school. There still needs to be done more work, there still needs more, there's still, there's still more work to be done. Most recently, we partnered with MSBA on the East project, which I hope all of you here in attendance tonight and all of you watching in the future have driven by. It is an absolutely beautiful building. It looks and is a brand-new building. There was some of the bones, if you will, were kept in place, but it is completely redesigned, redone, redesigned, brand-new building, something we can all be proud of, something that adds to all of our property values. So that project for East was a $44 million project. $44 million are received funding from the state, and the state has also approved $31 million for the South Middle School project. So there's $31 million that is for South, that the state has already approved to us, is going to give to us, that if this ballot question, ballot questions do not pass under the current Mayor Kokoros' plan to put the debt exclusion, to fund these projects, if we don't do these projects now, we're not getting a second shot at this. They have made it very clear, there is so much demand for the money at the state level through the MSBA. Braintree's been in conversations, in agreements with them for years, for over five years, these plans have been in place. So this is out there, this is on the table. I already voted, I did the mail-in voting, I voted yes on all four questions. I would encourage everybody to do so, as a resident, as a homeowner, as a counselor, as a former school committee member. I support all these fully. And one of the things we all know is our tax dollars pay for our services and our infrastructure in town. Braintree's known for one of the lowest tax rates around, and with that low tax rates comes some things you have to make choices on. There's always been a commitment to all the infrastructure in the town, specifically the schools. But as I've said, and I will keep saying, it's not enough, we do need to do more, and we need the residents' help. We need residents to step up, to say yes to support our schools, to keep our property values high, and our schools are sought after. People are moving to Braintree, continue to move to Braintree for our schools. I've said this for years, going back to my days on the school committee. You do have to live within your budget, even as a town and a municipality. If a resident, a homeowner, wants to make improvements to their home or buy something, if they don't have the money, they can't. Well, the town is no different. We have their operating plan, our capital plan, there's priorities in place. This through the state funding, hopefully, we're going to get this done. It is a priority. We need everybody's support on this. So I want to thank all those involved, Dr. Frank Hackett, for leading the way in conjunction with Mayor Sullivan on this, and Mayor Kokoros with his current plan to get this done as well. So everybody has worked so hard. It's been a collaborative project across all departments. DPW, our director Jim Arsenal is here. He's an integral part in our schools and working with the school staff on this as well. And our state legislator Mark Cuzak, I'm gonna reread a letter he sent to us back on March 4th, because as you all know, this debt exclusion was supposed to take place on March 28th. But as so many other events that have taken place, COVID has pushed back things. So we're now doing the debt exclusion on Saturday, September 26th. So Representative Cuzak writes to me, I'm gonna, the beginning was pertinent to the March event, but he would like to extend his sincere gratitude to MSBA Executive Director Jack McCarthy for his leadership and collaboration with us on fixing our schools. Over the past five years, the MSBA has been a true partner with Braintree as we work to improve our school facilities. Working together and with the support of the Sullivan administration, the council, the school committee, school administration, and legislative delegation, we have put in place a comprehensive system-wide plan to renovate and add on to East Middle School, East into a build, a brand-new South Middle School. Completing these projects would allow us to move fifth grade up to the middle schools and open over 20 classrooms in our six elementary schools. Through the hard work of the previous stated stakeholders, we were able to secure approval for our plan and receive two rounds of state funding from the MSBA, $40 million for the East, I think I said $44 million, sorry about that, and $31 million for South. The $71 million in state funding has been and continues to be crucial in fixing our middle schools and alleviating overcrowding at our elementary schools. It should be noted that this funding from the MSBA was not automatic or guaranteed to be approved. It is a competitive grant program and approximately 150 applications per year. Also, it's important to understand that the reimbursement amounts are determined through a detailed formula in State Law Chapter 70B. Through a collaborative effort and our hard work and careful planning, we received approval ahead of a large number of competing projects throughout the state. While East is nearly completed, the East is completed now, well, it's still almost completed, and the $40 million in state aid secured, the $31 million for South has yet to be secured by the town. In order to secure this funding, Mayor Kokoros and the council have taken a different approach for funding South and have put the question to voters for an approval of a debt exclusion. And I am hopeful that the debt exclusion will pass. He stated the March date, which, as I stated, is now September 26th. And we can secure the $31 million in state funding, which is now hanging in the balance. It is vital that we take full advantage of the $31 million grant and build a new South and complete our system-wide plan we embarked on five years ago. It would be far too irresponsible to stop our plans before they are complete. Complete, reject the $31 million in state aid and fail to meet the needs of our children. I have been and will continue to be a strong advocate for state funding of all aspects of our education system, including MSBA funding to provide our students, teachers, and staff the 21st century learning environment they need to succeed. Thank you for your continued friendship, and thank you for reading this letter into the record. Let us keep our efforts and finish the plan we started five years ago. All my best, Mark J. Cuzak, our state representative. Mark works closely with MSBA, he was an integral part in getting this funding put in place. So with that, I will turn over, I don't know if Ms. Heager or Mr. Carroll, you want to go first in the mayor's office? If you have comments, you want to go before or after?
Yeah, if I could, I appreciate it.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President, and councilors, and all who are attending. So, the good news is that because of, unfortunately, because of COVID, the good news is that it has significantly changed the cost of borrowing money. So initially, when we were looking at the debt exclusion vote in March, we had estimated approximately $191 was going to be the cost for the first five years to the average homeowner. That number has dropped to $170.88. Very significant drop. It averages out to about $42 and change per quarter for the average homeowner. So effectively, what happened was the interest rate pre-COVID was approximately 3.5%, which was a great interest rate, and we are currently at an interest rate of 2% for the 30-year note, which is the South Middle School project. And the interest rate declines to 1.5% for the 20-year note, 1.25% for the 10-year note, and 0.5% for the 5-year note. So we are at historic low numbers for interest. And we do understand that, you know, we're in a very difficult financial situation, that many people have lost their jobs. We understand that, and we definitely feel for them. And the bottom line is on this is that the overall picture on it, of the bigger picture, is that this is a long-term investment that will go past COVID. And I think that as we get into the next year and beyond, and we get ourselves back working again and get the economy back, we're gonna have the ability to realize these savings and have such a great interest rate and have a brand-new building. Part of the plan, as was mentioned by the president, is to move fifth grade into the middle school. And the only way to do this in the South District is to build this new building. And I will say that, you know, we need to maintain the equity of the fifth grade class. We do not want disruption in having to redistrict our entire school district if this didn't pass. But more importantly, it's about investment. And right now, we have the opportunity to make a very good investment at a very, very reasonable, probably the lowest rate we're ever gonna see as far as borrowing goes on the bonding side. So although we do have COVID, and we have a number of challenges that come with that, both within our own budget constraints, as well as folks' personal situations, this is, in the long run, the best solution for our schools. It is an opportunity for us to start to take care of the aging buildings by replacing and bringing in the technology that's necessary for our students. I will say that we have certainly, we looked at the budget from the beginning, back in November, and we had a lot of financial constraints at that point. And most certainly, after suffering the COVID losses in some of the different tax categories that we collect, it brought us to a point where this debt exclusion is really the only way that we'll be able to build this new school, as well as do the roofwork and a feasibility study for the high school and security improvements. So informationally, we're going to make sure that, from my office, that we have all the data out there. We're gonna post it, we're gonna do some additional press releases, et cetera, so that everyone knows that there's four questions, what those four questions amount to, and what the cost of each one of those votes is. And the most important thing is that we are looking at the best possible rate that we could possibly get in probably the history of borrowing at this point, just looking at our AA+ bond rating and where we sit right now financially. So this is an opportunity, and there's $31 million on the line. And if we look at that $31 million, and we look at if we had to pay that $31 million, it would drive the cost of this project through the roof. And at 170.88 for the first five years, or 42 and change per quarter, I think it is a wise investment on behalf of the taxpayers in the town of Braintree. And I hope that if anyone has any questions, they contact either the Yes Committee or they contact my office, which is 781-794-8100. And we will be here to answer those questions. We want, we wanted to make sure that everybody got the opportunity to vote, and that's why we have pushed the date to where it is today. We did not want people to be unable to vote in March, which was the peak of this pandemic. And I think that we've done everything we can to make it fair and make it available for everyone to vote, and with the mail-in voting, it's even easier. So I obviously support this debt exclusion, because I'm the one that presented it to the council. And I hope that if anybody has any questions, they can contact us or the Yes Committee. And I would hope that we can move forward and show how strong Braintree is as a community, as we have through this whole entire COVID pandemic thus far, and make this possible so that we have a new South and we invest money into our schools that is so desperately needed. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor Kokoros. Any member of the council have a question thus far? Okay, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Heager in your group. I know we have individuals here representing the project managers. So if each of you, if we could start by introducing who you are and who you are with tonight, and then continue with your presentation, please. Ms. Heager.
Hi, I'm Lisa Fisk Heager. I am the Chair of the Vote Yes for Braintree Schools Committee. Thank you, Council President Hugh, for giving us the opportunity to speak today. I also want to thank, have the opportunity to thank all the district councilors that back in January and February hosted meetings in each one of the districts with their constituents, and also thank Mayor Kokoros for doing the rounds with us at all those meetings so that we could educate people on the debt exclusion. So thank you very much for your support then, and hopefully now as well, with the postponement. I'm just gonna give a quick overview of the special election and clarify the four ballot questions. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Mike Carroll, who is the OPM from Hill International. He has been involved in both the East and the South projects, and he can answer any questions about construction or anything related to MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, but more importantly, he is a Braintree resident. So with that, Sue, could you show the first slide? Great, thank you. Okay, so the first question is town financing of South Middle School project, which is estimated right now at about 55.6. It still needs to go out to bid. It is a 30-year term. This is the town share of the overall $86 million, again, projected budget for a new South Middle School. The MSBA will provide $30.9 million to the town, as long as we can finance our pot. The new roofs for Flaherty, question number two, excuse me, the new roofs for Flaherty, Morrison, Hollis, Liberty, Highlands, and Menadequid is a $5 million bond for a 20-year term. The roofs on the schools are all old and have reached the end of their useful life. As a result, the Braintree Public Schools has been patching and fixing them for many, many years now, trying to extend their life. There's clear evidence based on what happened at South and Ross a few years ago that these roofs need to be replaced. They're between 28 and 32 years old. The roof replacements will cost between $500,000 and $1 million each, based on square footage. We also were invited into the green repair program with MSBA on the Highlands and the Liberty roofs. So the MSBA is gonna partner with us and help us with the cost of both of those roofs. A statement of interest was put forth by the school committee in the spring, so that was very good news. Again, they will partner with us on two of those roofs. Question number three is a feasibility study for Braintree High School, $1.5 million for a 5-year term. A feasibility study is a collaborative effort that documents a school's educational program needs, generates an initial space summary, documents existing conditions, establishes design parameters, and develops and evaluates alternatives as defined by the MSBA. Braintree Public Schools has submitted a statement of interest, which is essentially an application for the last two years. We also submitted one, again, this April, the school committee did, and the town council also approved it. We have yet to hear back from the MSBA on Braintree High School, the SOI for this year. But the last two years, they have not partnered with us, and the most obvious reason is because we currently have a project with both East and South in the pipeline. And for a community to have two major projects in the pipeline, as President Hume said, East is nearly done. It was a renovation and an addition project. And South has been decided that building a new school was the best alternative. And again, we have not heard on the SOI. We probably won't hear until the end of this year, as far as the high school is concerned. But again, having two projects simultaneously is really unheard of. So we've been very fortunate, excuse me, we're very fortunate with our partnership with the MSBA. And the fourth question is the security assessment and updates for $1 million for a 10-year term. A portion of the funds will be used to fund an assessment. The cost of the assessment is typically based on square footage and would likely range from $80,000 to $120,000 to complete all schools. That excludes East, obviously, since the security updates have been included in the new build. Determination of the specific enhancements will be made, excuse me, once the assessment is done, as far as what improvements we'll do at the schools. So that's just an outline of the four questions, the amounts and the terms of each loan. And as the mayor said, the impact to the average homeowner is now less than $180,000 per year. And as each one of these loans, as each one of these terms are met, the cost to the taxpayer will decrease. Because the debt exclusion, as you can see here, is a tax increase to pay for a specific project. And as each one of those projects are paid off, the balance will be lowered. So the tax increase can only be used for the projects approved for the voters on September 26th. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike Carroll. He can talk specifically about South, South's construction and timeline and such. So I'll leave it to you, Mike.
The statements on that, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this tonight with the council. As far as the South project, the largest portion of the questions that are out there, we've actually got a pretty extensive presentation that the design team provided us a while back, right before we went into the COVID hiatus. And I've actually asked, I think you've got about And I've actually asked, I think you've got about the first four slides on that, if we can maybe pull that up. This is the first four of about 25 slides, and I'm happy to give the full presentation to the council. And everybody can take a look at it. It really is pretty spectacular, if I would say so. I think it's a great addition to the school system and really a way to help out with the students.
Mike, while you're talking, just tell people what the background screen is on when they can see you.
Sure. My background screen is actually one of the slides from that presentation. And this is actually a 3D rendering of the courtyard that we're proposing for the new South school. So this is if you were standing, I'll say on the Peach Tree, sorry, actually, on the wood side. So if you were standing with your back to the woods facing out towards Peach Street, you can kind of see over here on this side of here, this is actually the library, media commons. We're looking out onto the courtyard. And then on this side here, this is going to be part of the academic wing. So you get the academic here and then further in the back there. So this is going to be an area that's a private area, but they also have up to three, I believe, three different smaller grouping that three different teachers could be out there at the same time with classes and potentially be teaching in an outside environment. So. There we go. All right. So like I said, this is the first slide. This is just the opening slide. This is actually, we're coming up, if you were a parent driving up or if you were walking up from the Peach Street side, from this perspective, if you looked 90 degrees to the right, you'd actually see the old school, the existing school that's there right now. So this is set out back behind it. And you can see the cafeteria and the cafeterium and kitchen on the left-hand side there. And then in the middle, you see the approach, which is the main entrance. And then on the right side is the academic wing. So if we can flip to the next slide, this will give, the next slide is an overview and will really allow you to see a better perspective. So page south, the bottom of the page is Peach Street. The angled building on the bottom side there is the existing South School. And then that's the Peach area. And then in the backside there, that is the proposed South. That's what we've been working on with the design team for the last almost two years to get to that point. The key features here is first and foremost, by building the new site, it minimizes into the students within the existing building. And with the configuration of the existing South, any additions or renovations to that really would have impacted the students much more substantially than what we were able to do at East, for example, where we were able to isolate those spaces. But as you're looking at Peach Street, the existing drop-off loop for South remains. And you can notice there's a much longer route from that drop-off route that goes out to the mans, the parking, this is on the page, on the side of the page, in a large drop-off loop. So this is the ability to queue up the rent cars and get them off of Peach Street, get them off of the residential streets and onto the property, which is really going to improve traffic flow even during peak times when, you know, parent drop off or pickup. In addition to that, on the right, you can see that there is a bus drop-off loop. So we're able to, similar to what we did at East, keep the public and the buses completely separate, which again is a very good safety feature. So that allows us to not have kids walking across bus roads and things like that. So that really is an important part of this. And then building it in the back part of the site again allows us to, during construction, minimize the impact to everybody. And you can see what we've been able to do with this, even though we're losing some of the fields in the backside, there, we're maintaining a large field that will be able to be used during gym classes of that nature. If we flip to the next slide, this is a little more zoomed in overview of this. So the drop-off loop is just to the bottom here. And then we've got the main entrance in there. There's a canopy covering that. So whether it's inclement weather or sunny weather, you've got some sun shade, you get some rain shade or snow, as it may be. Part of the design concept here is that the academic wing is on the right side, you know, page right and page south. So it's that L shape exactly right where that cross here is, that L shape there is most of the academic wing with the offices, the main office and the guidance office, one on the first floor and one on the second floor, right adjacent to the entrance. So as you're coming in, right before you get to the academic wing, you have the office there, really well thought out. Is where that library is, that's the library commons that you kind of see over here. And then to the left of the library is the cafeterium, that's the cafeterium, and then right behind in corridor rooms. So and then at the far backside of the pitch is the gymnasium that has the two gyms, it also has the locker rooms, and it's the secondary entrance for the bus students. And what this is to do by having this configuration is we can lock off the gym if we had an event on the weekend and open just that area if we're having an event in the auditorium. Or the library, you have easy access to the main entrance. So again, they're trying to think of this not only as a school building and functional for the school, but also potentially for the community at large, additional activities in the evenings and things of that nature. So I didn't want to take too long, but I will last the last slide here. This is a zoom in at that main entrance. So you can see the canopy. Another thing you'll notice on the windows here, the academic wing, there's the vertical, the horizontal sun shades. So that's a south-facing facade, which really gets the sun. So we put sun shades on there to help minimize the solar gain on the building. Additionally, for the cafeteria and the cafeterium, we want to have a large window area. Then we want to have a lot of light in there. But again, it creates a potential for sun, for solar gain. So it isn't finalized yet, but they're working on a screening there that would have some interest to it, but also still allow you to be able to have that natural light in and have the visibility out as well. You'll notice there's a website noted here. Lisa, I believe that you've already posted this link on the Facebook page and on your site. But this is actually a link that we literally just got hot to presses today from the design team. It's narrated by Will Spears, who is the principal for Millidair Spears. And it actually flies you through the building around the building and gives you details. So I would highly recommend for everybody to check that out. It's a pretty neat, neat fly through that he's been able to do for us for that. So that's just a general overview of the South project in general. I think that's my OPM spiel, if you will, Lisa, mention that I'm also a Braintree resident. And, you know, as a resident, you know, a couple of the other points that I would probably like to suggest is, I firmly believe that I'm voting yes on all four of these. And I think all four of these votes do need strong support from the town. I know the mayor had touched base on unemployment and things of that nature. The East school was employing between 100 and 200 people, sometimes even more than that, during the process of that school. The South school will do the same. I was a firm example of a local person who had a job because of that. I know that there's many other people out there that were on, that were. And I think that that's a economy by having a project like this and having those local jobs being created in a time of need. So I think that that's an important part of it. Another thing that I'd like to say is that, you know, as a construction professional, a lot of times people will come to me and say, hey, what's the best room to invest in in your house? You know, is it the kitchen? Is it the bath? In this circumstance, I would actually say, think it's the kitchen. But in reality, it's actually the classroom. Classroom is the best room for you to invest in your house because you can invest 20, 30, $50,000 in a kitchen. And you might get a return on investment on it, but that return on investment isn't going to be 100% and you're almost immediately getting a depreciation. Now, whether you have kids in the school or not, an investment in the schools is an investment in your property. It's investing in your property value. And I think, you know, from that perspective, it doesn't matter if you have kids in the school or you don't. An investment in our schools is an investment in your own property. And to me, a $200 a year investment or under $200 a year, the return on investment on that is going to be much greater than anything you would get putting $200 into your own home. With that, I'll turn it back over to Lisa. I know she's got a couple more things here, but I'm here if there's any questions, especially specific to the construction in the South or even the MSBA, the roof projects, things of that nature.
Mike, can I just ask you a question before I take it back?
Absolutely.
Can you just touch on the timeline?
Sure, the timeline. So the original schedule that we had prior to COVID was we were targeting a fall of '22 opening. So right now, we've been delayed about eight months here with the design. So we're targeting a fall of '23. So it's basically about a one-year pushback. As we get into it and as we're finalizing the design, we're going to look to see if we can do anything to improve on that. Maybe a midsemester turnover or something like that. I wouldn't commit to that yet. But right now, we're definitely committing that we can absolutely make the fall of '23 right now.
Thank you, Mike. Sue, can you go back to the next slide for me, please? This is what we've been passing out. We have been distributing flyers back before the pandemic. We distributed nearly 10,000 flyers. Thank you very much, Councilor Connors, for your help with that. Door-to-door, we had volunteers going door-to-door. We still have nearly 3,000 that we're hoping to get out in the next week or so. But this is our comparison of what a yes vote means versus what a no vote means. So I'm just going to touch on this quickly. I know that Mike touched on some of these. I've touched on some of these, Councilor Hume, the mayor. So obviously, if we get a yes vote, we're going to get a brand-new South Middle School. If we don't, we're going to lose that $31 million that the state has granted us. We're also going to lose $2 million that has already been expended into date for the feasibility study and the design for South. That $31 million will go back into the pool and some other town will benefit from it. We'll have, if we have a yes vote, we'll have an equitable educational experience across both middle schools. Right now, obviously, the kids on the east side of town have a brand-new middle school and South has the existing building. If we are unable to pass this and we do not get a new South Middle School, then there will be some kind of restructuring or some kind of redistricting of the school system. We don't know what that is yet. The school committee had asked for some information back again before the pandemic. And there were some, a couple of options that were being thrown around. But again, nothing has been decided or voted upon. But it's definitely going to have a significant impact to how our current school system is set up. The whole reason that we went with the middle schools, I know that the Council Hume touched on this, but we had made a commitment back close to six years ago now that we were going to, we, I'll start at the beginning, we had East in the MSBA. We had been accepted for a renovation project six years ago for East. When Dr. Hackett joined us, we were able to change that that program instead of just being upgrades and repairs and renovations to renovation addition. And with that, the school committee at the time voted to move the fifth grade class up to the middle school, district-wide. And the plan was to, after East was done, to move on and to do the same thing at South, to build the South Middle School. And the whole purpose here is to free up nearly 23 classrooms of space at the elementary schools. I'm sure people know that we're teaching kids in hallways and most of the schools don't have media centers anymore. So this was going to free up the space, space crunch, the overcrowding at the elementary school was the whole purpose of moving the fifth graders up. So we need to fulfill on that commitment. We need to move the fifth graders up across town. And we need to have every child in fifth to eighth grade benefit from the state of the outbuildings. If South is not built, then there will be some kind of, again, some kind of redistricting. And I see, again, the school committee has not voted, but I see every, maybe six through eight, going to East, the entire town, so that every student can benefit from that new building. Obviously, the new roofs, we need those roofs desperately. They're 28 to 32 years old. They're well past their life expectancy. We're going to have to continue to patch them. We've had leaks in some of the buildings that have caused other, you know, internal issues. And if we're not able to pass the question for the new roofs, then that money's going to have to come out of operating budget or a capital budget in order to repair or to fix those roofs. That's something that is going to have to get done regardless. A detailed study of Braintree High School, there's been a lot of discussion again as to why we went with the middle schools before the high school because the high school was definitely in need of some love and repairs. And this feasibility study is the first step in doing that. There's multiple funding sources. I know the mayor touched on this as well, I believe. But not only is it homeowners, but there's a commercial property tax that will also be increasing as well as the 31 million from the state. And as everybody has really said, how important a school system is to a community. We are very proud of the Braintree Public Schools. People moved to Braintree for our school system. If we have a school system, if we maintain a good school system, a high-quality, excellent school system, we maintain and we increase our property values compared to other towns around us. That's probably it. Again, I'm the cheerleader for the debt exclusion. I would also like to acknowledge my vice chair, Jen Dolan, who wasn't able to join us tonight, but she has been my right-hand woman. Without her, nothing would be possible. We do have a Facebook page, as Mike mentioned. It's Vote Yes for Braintree Schools. We have a website, Vote Yes for Braintree Schools. It has a lot of answers, a lot of FAQs, a lot of information on those if people haven't had a chance to check those out. You know, every resident has a stake in the school system. And, you know, let's show our children and our teachers how important it is to us, how important education is and how important all four of these questions are. And I'm asking all you councilors to reach out to your constituents, to remind them of the election on the 26th, and to ask them to please vote on all, vote yes on all four questions. There is a debt exclusion calculator that is on the town's website, and it reflects the lower rate that the man described, so people can see exactly what the impact is to them. And the polls are open. I know Town Clerk Casey was on here. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on the 26th. We will have sign holders at all three. It's just the three election sites, the same as the primary, East, South, and the high school. We're going to have sign holders on Wednesdays and Saturdays. We're going to be redistributing more of our flyers. If anybody would like to volunteer or help, you know, there's plenty of ways to reach out to us, either through Facebook or through our website. Again, I implore, this is so important to this town, it's so important to the kids, it's so important to the community. So please, please, please vote and please vote yes. Thank you so much. Any question from anybody, we'll be happy to answer.
So if people do want to help, you mentioned you're going to be distributing flyers door-to-door and you're doing standouts. Tell us what the standouts are this week, where and when, so people can just show up.
We're doing the standouts on Wednesday from 4:30 to 6:30 in front of Thayer Academy at Union in Washington and at Braintree Five Corners. On Saturday morning from 9:00 to 11:00, again, in front of Thayer Academy by the farmer's market and at South Braintree Square.
Okay.
And then next week, we may expand it into 37. It'll all be on our website. But for this week, Wednesday and Saturday, those are the locations. Just show up. Anytime you can give, five minutes, 15 minutes, two hours. We appreciate the support.
So can you just put that information in the chat and with their website and Facebook page? So for people at home want that. And you're taking donations, it's my understanding, too.
We are taking donations, yes.
Money, as we all know. So if somebody wants to donate to your cause, what do they do?
They can write a check out to Vote Yes for Braintree Schools and send it to my address, 16 Connolly Circle, C-O-N-N-E-L-L-Y, Circle in Braintree. Or they can go to our website, votyesforbraintreeschools.org, and pay through PayPal. There's a link right on, donate button right on the homepage.
And I am proud to personally support this cause. I hope we all do the same. Mike, there's other people with us here tonight who I see who are on this project. Mary Mulroni, Dennis McCaffrey, is Dennis McCaffrey with us?
They're both DPD, they're both National Grid.
You know, I'm thinking, sorry, Mary from School Building.
Mary Mahoney, yes.
Similar last name. I was like. Similar last name. I was like, okay. So Mary, Dennis, we'll get to you later, but similar names. Okay. Any councilors have any questions or comments? Counselor Mackin, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Lisa and Mike, I just wanted to thank you guys for joining us tonight. And Lisa, thank you for all the work you've done on this. I know firsthand how much work goes into a debt exclusion vote. You know, the town has tried them in the past. And, you know, my mother actually sat me down last night and I'd kind of forgotten about this, but I lost one in 2000, 2001. You know, she was a big person driving for it. And I forgot, me and my sisters would have to get ourselves ready for school in the morning because she'd be out by herself holding signs, trying to get it in. She told me they lost by 32 votes. But I want to thank you for all the work you've put into this. I know it's not easy and you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. I love the Braintree Public Schools.
And for those of you who don't know, Lisa is a former school committee member and chair of the Braintree Schools, two-time chair, or two terms rather, four years. Okay, any other counselor? Seeing none, I just want to close. Ms. Hager, I'm glad you mentioned the equity for all students because that was a point I wanted to bring up, that there should be equity for all of our students. That was something that the School Building Committee, the School Committee, the mayor's office, everybody took into account with these plans that were made over the years, that all students should have the same opportunity for the education. Counselor Ringus was also a member of the school committee. These conversations go back years. We were all involved in them. Every student of the Braintree Public Schools deserves the opportunity for a state-of-the-art education. We have top-notch teachers, and now we have a top-notch state-of-the-art building in East Middle School. We need to do the same for South. We started this project in South. We needed the continuities. We need the residents to step up. We need residents to support our schools, which we know everybody does to support our schools. They really need to go out and vote yes. This is where every vote does count. Every vote does matter. Your vote counts. Your vote matters. We need you to support this. And Mike Carroll, I loved your quote, and I'm going to end on this quote after I give a little update. So the town clerk has said, 6,000 early votes, early voting ballots were mailed out for early voting. 1,200 have been returned. That's 20%. So we already have 20% of the 6,000, just for the mail-in ballots, already have voted in this election. So great work to all those who submitted. But I'm going to end on Mike Carroll's quote. An investment in schools is an investment in your property. It's that simple. So we all benefit because we have great property values and we stay here and we have all this service. So if we all invest in our schools, we're going to continue that, and you're going to not only increase your property values. My youngest is a senior. He's out this year. I will still be supporting the Braintree Schools. I grew up in Braintree State and Braintree because of the schools. I strongly urge you all to support this and get involved and help pass out flyers. Tell your neighbor. Tell people to vote. So thank you, Ms. Hager. Thank you, Mike Carroll. And Mike Carroll, all these years on School Building Committee, I never knew you were a Braintree resident. So glad to have you all with us tonight. Thanks for all of the work. Thank you, Merrick Coros, for all your support and your involvement on this. And September 26, Saturday, September 26, get out and vote. Okay, with that, we are moving on with the agenda. We have no minutes to approve tonight. All business. The town clerk, Jim Casey, is here this evening for order 20056 and 20057. 20056 is the call of the state general election for November 3, 2020, or take up any action relative thereto. We do have our town clerk in attendance with us here tonight. Where did he go? Jim, I'm going to ask if you'd like to make a brief statement.
Okay, what we have before us on the two motions is the first, you were required by Mass. General Law to call the election for November 3. And this is what the intention of this piece of disordinance is, or order is doing. It lists all of the different races that will be on the ballot. There are quite a few. And as everyone knows, that there are two ballot questions, which a lot of people are getting confused with, November ballot questions and the September ballot questions. But you're going to find out that, by the little red booklets, we just received some advanced copies. They will be mailed out for the November 3 election, explaining that whole process about those ballot questions. And what I need the board to do now, the council to do now, is to call the election. And in particular, on stating the time of the elections, the polls will open at 7:00 in the morning and close at 8:00 p.m. One thing you don't have to do is the results. It could be next Christmas before we get the results out to you, based on the volume we're expecting. So it's going to be a challenging time for all of us here in town and across actually the country on giving the results of this particular election coming up. So any questions on the call for the election?
I don't see any. Thank you, Clerk Casey. With that, I will turn it over to Counselor Ringus for the motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that upon the request of the town clerk, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, so order the call of the state general election as to November 3, 2020, that specifically, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the town of Braintree is hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the state general election on Tuesday, November 3, 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to vote at the polling places in their respective precincts to cast their votes for the following purposes: to cast their votes in the state general election for the candidates of political parties for the following offices: president and vice president, senator in Congress, representative in Congress for the 8th District, councillor for 2nd and 4th District, senator in general court Norfolk, Bristol, and Plymouth District, senator in general court Norfolk and Plymouth District, representative in general court 5th Norfolk District, register of probate for Norfolk County, county commissioner for Norfolk County, county treasurer for Norfolk County, and sheriff, which is a vacancy for Norfolk County, Blue Hills Regional Vocational School District, and two initiative petitions.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counselor Ringus, seconded by Counselor Ryan. Clerk Semino, roll call, please.
Counsel Barrica.
Yes.
Counselor Connors.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Sasha.
Yes.
That's nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you, Clerk Semino. Moving on to 20057, the town clerk designation of early voting site, dates, times for the state general election, or take up any action relative thereto. Clerk Casey, do you want to say anything further on this?
Legislative changes made this past July required that we have 14 consecutive days of early voting for the November 3 general election. It begins on Saturday, October 17, and will run through Friday, October 30. Each day, we will be opening the polls and the early voting in-person will be held at Cahill Auditorium. And it will open at 8:30 each morning. However, the closing dates are a little different. On Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, we will be closing at 1:30 p.m. On Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, we'll be closing at 4:30 p.m. And on Tuesdays, we'll be here until 7 o'clock to gather anybody's ballots that they want to cast them at that particular time. I just want to bring out a little tidbit of information here. Back in the first time, we had early voting for the general election with a presidential candidate. It was only 11 days of early voting, and we had over 7,000 people walk through the doors at Cahill to cast an early vote ballot at that particular time. I expect that number to be significantly higher. So it's a challenging time for all of us, and I think that we'll be leaning on a lot of people to help us get through this process.
Thank you, Jim. And for those either listening at home or with us tonight, if they want to know specifically where these times are, where can they find this information on the town website?
Once the council approves it this evening, it will be posted tomorrow morning up on the website, main page. I think there's a link that the mayor's aide, Steve Larry, has posted that will have these dates. But in addition, it'll also have the copy, it's a copy of the ballot for the September 26 election, if anybody wants to take a peek at that, just so when they're well informed when they vote.
Okay. And just to remind everybody, pending approval tonight, the early voting only takes place at Cahill Auditorium. The voting on Election Day, November 3, takes place at Braintree High School, East Middle School, and South Middle School through the end of this year. With that, I will turn it over to Counselor Ringus, unless any counselor has a question on this. Seeing none, Counselor Ringus for the motion.
Thank you, Madam President. As to 20057, I would move upon the request of the town clerk, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, so order that in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the town of Braintree hereby requires to establish, under MGL Chapter 54, Section 25b subsection F, an early voting site to allow any qualified voter, as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 51, to cast a ballot for any biennial state election during the early voting period. At the recommendation of the Braintree Board of Registars, the Braintree Town Council hereby designates Braintree Town Hall, specifically Cahill Auditorium, as Braintree's early voting site. Further, early voting hours shall be held during the days and hours described below. Saturday on the date of October 17 and October 24, opening at 8:30 a.m., closing at 1:30 p.m. Sunday, October 18 and Sunday, October 25, opening at 8:30 a.m. and closing at 1:30 p.m. Monday, October 19 and October 26, opening at 8:30 a.m., closing at 4:30 p.m. Tuesday, October 20 and Tuesday, October 27, opening at 8:30 a.m. and closing at 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, October 21 and Wednesday, October 28, opening at 8:30 a.m. and closing at 4:30 p.m. Thursday, October 22 and Thursday, October 29, opening at 8:30 a.m. and closing at 4:30 p.m. And Friday, October 23 and Friday, October 30, opening at 8:30 a.m. and closing at 1:30 p.m.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counselor Ringus, seconded by Counselor Ryan. Clerk Semino, a roll call, vote, please.
Counsel Barrica.
Yes.
Counselor Connors.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Sasha.
Yes.
That's nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you all. Thank you, Town Clerk Casey, for all your work on this. Okay, moving on to the next item, 20058, request for appropriation, Braintree Historic Inventory 2020 Project, or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on order 20058?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counselor Ringus, seconded by Counselor Ryan, to open the public hearing. Clerk Semino, roll call, vote, please.
Counsel Barrica.
Yes.
Counselor Connors.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Sasha.
Yes.
All in favor.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Clerk Semino. At this time, I will refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, Counselor Barrica, for a recommendation to the council.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee met last night to consider this appropriation for $30,000 of CPA funds to support the completion of a survey of 120 historic properties in town. The survey will help the town recognize, preserve, and enhance our historical resources and heritage for future generations, and it is expected to be completed by June of 2021. It's also notable that the town has received a grant, which will reimburse us for half of the cost of the project once the project is completed. And just as a reminder to the residents who are listening tonight, the funds being asked for are from our Community Preservation Act Fund. So this is a discreet pool of money. It's derived from a 1% fee on our property taxes, which is then matched by the state. The Ways and Means Committee unanimously, and I would add enthusiastically, sends this to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Counsel Barrica. And I just want to add to that. I am so glad you brought that up about the community preservation funds, which I would like Director Stickney and whoever at the mayor's office in the future will get you on the agenda to have a discussion about what the community preservation funds are, because there's been discussion out there. Well, if we can buy this or use this money, like specifically the Liberty and Grove, that we had community preservation funds used for that, people are not understanding what its intent is and what it's used for. It can't be commingled with the operating fund. It's completely separate funds. So I think that would be a worthwhile discussion for the future. So thank you, Counsel Barrica, for bringing that up. With that, would anybody from the mayor's office wish to speak? We do have Director Christine Stickney with us here tonight. Ed Spelman, Director Municipal Finance and Planning, and Nicole Taub, our Chief of Staff and Town Solicitor. Any of you wish to speak on this?
Good evening, Madam President. I would just defer any questions to Director Stickney with regards to this request.
Certainly. You want me to open it up for questions to the council and Director Stickney, if you would like to address those? Anybody from the council have questions on this matter? Counsel Barrick, oh, no. Counselor O'Brien, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of questions. Firstly, one of my constituents had requested this. I didn't see a response come through my email stream. Doesn't mean he didn't get a response, but I hear properties. And so the question is, is the inventory houses and, I guess, land only? Or will it include historically named or associated bridges and other historic monuments?
At this point, it's basically structures, historic structures. You know, obviously, given the age of the town of Braintree, there's many things that we can be doing some inventory on and research. But we took a look at those historic structures that are the oldest portions of town, and that's what we're looking at right now. This is something that we do every, say, five years. I think it was 2012, maybe even more than that last time. We did the Elm Street and up near, up to St. Thomas More and all the way over to Braintree Square and that area. So we just can only do so many at a time. But I think at some point, yes, we'll be looking at bridges and other things as well.
Okay, Madam President, my second question, if I could. Or do you want me to halt and wait for?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So the other question is, will this preclude, and I think the answer is no, but that's an obvious question. Will it preclude anything related to demolitions in the future? In other words, when we look at the Viking Club, the Viking Club may or may not have, and it's moot at this point, but may or may not have been on this list. Of course, obviously, now we know that it was not historic, so it would not have been on the list. But if it were historic, the Historic Commission, their work during a demolition request, this wouldn't preclude anything from being added in the future, am I correct?
If the Historic Commission, who will be, when the demolition request comes in, they are given a very short time window of five days to make a decision whether it should have a hearing or not. And it is at that hearing that they then decide if there's historical significance or it's a place of historical activity that's warranting, you know, preservation under the demolition delay. In the case of the Viking Club, we did have a demolition delay hearing for that one. They took a look at it. They actually walked through the property and looked at the interior and the exterior, and the decision made was that it was not historically significant. And so then, it was a lot. historically significant. And so then it was allowed to be demolished. What this provides is some of the research beforehand, before something gets to that point, so that it can be part of the history of the town. It goes into a database that's kept by the Mass Historical Commission. And even though something may be demolished on a property, it would be that database that if someone was interested in the history, they were able to go and take a look at it.
So my, I guess to net it out then, it wouldn't preclude something from being added in the future. This isn't a closed list, end of inventory. Other things could be added as discovered, correct?
That's correct. So, you know, this was a list of properties that the commission felt needed to have some attention to at this point in time, and they will be submitting the forms to Mass Historical. But they would like to do the entire town at some point, but that's a matter of workload and also having the available funding. So as Madam Chairman of the Ways and Means had said, we were able to get a grant this time, so we were able to do a little bit more than we had the last time. But we'll be continuing this effort into the future.
Thank you.
Councilor Mackin, was your question or comment? I saw your hand raised.
I did. And then I, so more out of curiosity, Mr. Stickney, how old are these towns? Like, what's the determination for historic for the properties? Is it, you know, 100 years old, 150?
Well, there's two me, I mean, for demolition delay, it is, I believe it's 100 years old. And then for just historical significance, it's 50 years old. So different entities have different thresholds. But for the fact that it's a historic inventory forms that we're doing, it could be a house that's less than 20 years old. I mean, you're allowed to put all that information in, because at some point, it will be over 50 years old. But that's why we're starting with the oldest first and trying to work back. We had been working in a particular geographic areas in town. You know, like I said, we did Brantree Square and Elm Street. And then it was discussed that, well, maybe we should go out and get the oldest homes and structures in town first before something happens.
All right, thank you. I was just curious. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Mack. Any other council have a question or comments? Okay, we are still in the public hearing. So anybody from the public wish to speak on matter 2005-8 on the Brantree Historic Inventory? Now is your opportunity to do so. Okay, seeing none from the council, is there a motion, I mean, from the residents, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Been a motion to close the public hearing by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote.
Councilor Berica.
Yes.
Councilor Connors.
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Mackin.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Councilor Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to Councilor Ringus for a motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I would so move that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44b of the General Laws and with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the appropriation of $30,000 from the CPA Historic Resource Fund for the Brantree Historic Inventory 2020 Project, conditional on the funds expended under the Community Preservation Committee and the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Second.
Been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berica.
Yes.
Councilor Connors.
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Mackin.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Councilor Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That's unanimous on order 2005-8. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, councils.
Thanks, Director Stickney. Okay, and on order, sorry, we had a couple of changes. On order 20060, I am going to refer to the Chairman of the Committee on the Department of Public Works, Councilor Ryan, for a recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Earlier this evening, the Committee on the Department of Public Works met on 20060, all the way through 20066, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 National Grid petitions. All seven petitions are related to either leaks on National Grid gas lines in the town of Brantree, where National Grid needs to get in and do repair work on their distribution network, or they need to install corrosion monitoring equipment. So it's really repair-type work they need to do. All of these streets are under moratorium. They've been done over in the last five years. So three of them were done in 2019. So we had a lengthy discussion with National Grid folks that are here on this meeting still. I think, let me just check, with Dennis McCaffery and Mary Mulrooney from National Grid. We had in-depth discussions with them, how we can make sure that this doesn't happen again in the future, where when we do a roadway over, National Grid's not coming back and fixing their lines with leaks. We'd like to see them, if it's aging infrastructure in the roadway, where they will replace their infrastructure. And we, as the town of Brantree, if we identify the streets that we're going to do over with our five-year roadway replacement program, we will defer doing a roadway over and delay that work wherever we can to allow National Grid adequate time to get in there and replace their infrastructure. So we had that conversation as well. So for all of these, all of these motions, it says that they need to do curb-to-curb repair on the roadway when they're done, because all of these are streets under moratorium. So we talked that over with our DPW staff, with National Grid staff, and everyone was in agreement, that's the repair methodology that should be utilized. What will happen on all these streets is, the work will be done this year, there'll be a temporary patch on the roadway, and then next year, they'll go in and do the permanent curb-to-curb repairs on the roadways, just so everyone understands that. All of the motions are very similar. So I think when Councilor Ringus reads these motions, maybe he could read the first one, 14 Sterling Park, and read it all the way through, because it's very, a lot of words. And then I think all of the motions are the same after that. So he could just say, after that, as recommended by staff, for the other six motions, I think would be appropriate. So the Department of Public Works, the Subcommittee, excuse me, on Public Works voted unanimously to recommend favorable action for all seven National Grid petitions. We wanted to make sure you understood that we had in-depth conversations, though, saying, we don't want this type of situations arising in the future. We want every, the National Grid and the DPW to do everything they can to work together to minimize this in the future. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan. Councilor Berica, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam President. My question, if I may, is for the National Grid team, and wondering, you know, what is your outreach plan for the homeowners and the abutters, especially because as Councilor Ryan mentioned, these, there is some construction fatigue, I would say, especially along Hancock Street. So, you know, what's your plan for notifying, notifying these residents, and how long do you expect the disruption to last?
So with that, did Dennis or Mary, you wish to speak on this, address that question?
Yeah, hi, this is Dennis. So typically, when we do large projects, like Liberty Street, which is ongoing now, Elm Street, pretty high profile, two weeks prior, we'll do abutter notifications. We'll also send FAQs and emails to town officials. In these particular cases, we don't, we don't typically send out abutter notifications. These are one-day jobs. So we secure police detail. It's a small work zone, minimal traffic, you know, obstructions, and one day, one day in, one day out. That's the typical type of repair we're talking here. However, if the council wants us to do a neighborhood outreach in these, on these jobs, we can put something together.
Councilor Ryan, if I could refer to you, is that part of the discussion in committee? Notification to residents?
We would ask that, you know, that's really something that has to come from, I think, the DPW staff that let the residents know that they're going to be working in the roadways. I don't know, I can let the DPW director answer that question. How do residents get notified?
Well, I mean, I would think-
Ryan, we do have with us here tonight Director, DPW Director Jim Arsonal, and I believe, for the first time, our new Assistant DPW Director and Town Engineer, John Thompson, is with us here tonight as well. So Director Arsonal, go ahead.
Madam President. So yes, typically, you know, given that the National Grid is the one who goes out there, we typically require them to make sure they notify. So if that's the will of the council, we will make sure that they notify the abutters prior to them coming out. So it's part of our permit, we'll make sure that they take care of that.
Okay. Councilor Berica?
Yeah, I would, I think that it's, nobody likes surprises. And if we can, you know, send some, I think, yeah, let's, let's let residents know that they're going to have, even if it's just a one-day job, that they can expect, you know, whatever it is, the crew is going to be there from 7 to 5, or whatever the timing is, especially on some of these locations where we have some, you know, ADA issues and everything else. We want to make sure residents are well, well appraised of the situation. So I, thank you, Director Arsonal. If we can, if we can do that, that I think would go a long way.
I mean, typically, we always do that on the larger projects, but we can also do that for this, so it's not a problem.
All right. Thank you, Director Arsonal. I'm going to go back to Councilor Ryan, just for committee, and then we're going to get to Councilor Connors and O'Brien.
So my question is, when we notify residents, is it usually National Grid that notifies them for these types of jobs, or is it the town of Brantree that notifies them for these jobs?
Usually, it's National Grid.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilor Connors, go ahead.
Hi. So I just have a couple of questions. Thank you, Councilor Ryan, for that in-depth report, because you answered actually quite a few of my questions. But, so, one of my questions is, you guys talked, first of all, safety issues with the leaks. I assume that the leaks are, well, they're leaks, but there's, they're safe for the residents that are listening to this, that they shouldn't go into a panic if there's leaks coming out with the gas at these residences?
Yes, that's correct. They're graded and monitored, yes. But if you smell, and there's a strong smell, please call it in.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure everybody listening understood that, that there's no, there's no immediate threat or danger to them. And then, can you explain-
Just hold on one sec. That's Mary Mulrooney with National Grid who was just speaking. Go ahead, Councilor Connors.
No, that's okay. Can you explain the grade, just for my own notification, the grading system? We mentioned in your notes about downgraded from 2A to grade 3. Can you explain the grades and what they are?
The grading system is regulated by the state, the DPU, Department of Public Utilities, and it's, it's, it's a monitoring. So if a leak comes in, and it's, it's got footage from the foundation of the building, the congestion of the area, there's a lot of factors that go into grading a leak, and they are monitored for the safety of everybody.
And what's the grading? Is it like 1 through 5, 1 through 10?
Oh, no.
1 being the worst, 10 being the best, or?
No, it's 1 to 3.
1 to 3. And 1 being the worst case, or better?
1 being the worst.
One needs to be repaired immediately.
Yeah.
There's a, 2, there's no threat, immediate threat. And 3, there's no immediate threat, and it just needs to be monitored once a year. The grade 2 has to be monitored twice a year, depending on the readings. If it's a manhole read, you know, percentage of gas inside a manhole, like Mary said, how close to a building. If it's in a building, it's automatically a grade 1. Any read in any building is a grade 1. Any read within 5 feet of a building or a house is a grade 1.
Thank you.
Some there, footage-wise.
And my last question is, on the cathodic protection. So in order, in order to change out the inodes, you guys have to physically dig for that. Those aren't set up in a position where you can just, in a manhole or whatever, that you can just go in and change. The road has to be physically dug up to change those out on a regular basis. And how often do you change them out?
They usually, like in these cases, they were paved over. So that's why we think we're going to have to dig down if we can't find. It's usually the inodes, we put four of them in there. They're attached to the steel pipe, and then they're good. We don't have to, we don't have to replace them. You can test them through the wires coming up through the gate box. But in these cases, you know, due to paving or whatever, construction, the gate boxes were either paved over, destroyed, or buried. So we're going to have to dig down, either find those gates, those gate boxes and the wires, or replace them, depending on what we find.
So in the future, would there be-
Two light, two hole.
Right. So in the future, maybe a better communication or discussions while Brantree is paving on where these are, so that we don't run into this issue again? Is that something that, corrective action that you guys have taken up, to make sure it doesn't happen in the future?
It is, it is a corrective action, and it is something we, we try and handle with whoever's paving. Then we try and pay the contractor, whoever's doing the street. Some of them do it for us, some of them don't. So if, you know, if we're notified, and we're going out there, and we see them, we could go out and raise them. But, you know, we're definitely, after the meeting today, we're looking into it a lot more in depth.
Okay. Those are all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Connors. Councilor O'Brien, you are next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I want to thank the DPW Committee for their great work on this. And as you all know, I'm a big supporter of the moratorium. So for that, I thank the Chairman of the Committee particularly. I want to say congratulations to the debut of a certain councillor's best friend there. We appreciate that debut. But my real question, the crux of my issue, is that the notification, while it is great, and we greatly appreciate National Grid for not only notifying, but also doing a crown to curb, we appreciate that. And I know it's an expense, but that's what we want, and that's what we ask for. But could the notification that goes out also include the fact that there will be a temp that we'll be taking care of in the future? Because a lot of residents don't realize, when there's a temporary patch there, that it's going to be followed up later on. And so sometimes you'll get a call, we'll get calls, as councillors complaining about the poor patching, because oftentimes it is. But the fact that you're going to come back out and do the crown to decide will be-
Yeah. Hi, this is Dennis. That's a great point. A lot of times, the conditions on the permits state exactly what you just spoke of there, that they want settlement for a period of time. And then we do permanent repairs after a season, typically the next spring. And that's going to be the case here, and that will be noted in the abutter notification letters to the residents. And hopefully, that will give them a better feeling. You know, we don't want to be out there either doing these, and we will commit to working with the DPW, continue to work with the DPW, I should say, to minimize these as much as possible. But we will have that language in the abutter notifications.
Thank you.
Okay. And you can hear my dog. Sorry. Counselor Sasha.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of questions. If you could clarify, that when you do the- If you could clarify that when you do the, when you do the final repaving after a year, that especially for those streets that were recently paved, that the street will be back in kind of like-new condition, not be all patched up? Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. And I was just curious, how were these leaks discovered? Were these people noticing the odor? Were these pressure checks? How did you find these leaks? And do you, you know, I guess, do you think this, that we've covered all the leaks that need to be worried about at this point? Or was this just kind of found randomly? Maybe you just explain a little bit about how this was found?
I'll talk a little bit about leaks. For us, typically, we monitor our system per a DPU requirement. So that's, it's by vehicles. That's typically one of the ways we discover leaks. We have walking surveys that we perform, and they did have walking surveys in Braintree this year. I know because we got calls, it was a tricky situation because of the COVID situation. And we, but the majority of the leaks are called in by members of the public, either out for a walk, that's the, you know, the captain is put into the gas, so it's a very distinctive odor. We want people to call if they, if they have an odor of gas. So typically, and then Billy, you were just pointing out this one, is that- Yeah, that one was, yeah, Edgemont was turned in by the public. Yeah. Hemlock was turned in by survey. That was a special. Yeah, so there's a, there's a variety. Do I think there'll be more leaks in Braintree? Yeah, I do. And just being honest, we have these, this is the second oldest gas company in the United States. We replace hundreds of miles of main every year. And it's not random replacement, it's done by, it's done by an engineering scoring of age of pipe, type of pipe, leak history on the pipe. And we do, we do try to work with the DPW, with their street paving list, and try to, we work with the public works projects like River Street. We just replaced the main, where they're going to be doing a water main project out there. So we try to coordinate it. Could we do better? Yes, and we'll continue to try to improve.
All right, thank you. I guess, I'm just, I'm asking about how they were found, because it seems like, it seems like seven is a lot to come up all at once. Maybe it's just because I'm a new counselor, maybe this happens all the time. But it, just looking at this document, it seems like a lot coming up all at once. Have these been discovered over months, and we're just kind of pulling it all together?
Yeah, these were discovered probably over a period of, you know, nine to 12 months. So they've been out there for a while. The, Braintree is, they've paved a lot of streets. They're very protective of their streets. So we, we work with the, with the DPW, but when we apply for a permit on a street that's under guarantee, it's an automatic no. And then there's a, there's a process that, you know, we review the leak. We want to ensure it's a grade two, it's something that we have to repair. So there's a review process on our end. But then we eventually get to a point where we need to repair these leaks. And, and that's how we get on the agenda. And we ask for permission from the DPW Committee, see if they'll endorse it and pass it on to the council for, you know, with the positive recommendation. So, no, they just didn't come up over a period of a month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselor on these matters? Okay, if nobody objects, Counsel Ringus will read the first motion, because as Counsel Ryan stated, all staff recommendations are the same. These all pertain to leaks. So if he reads the first one, and then we'll prove them all at once. Any objection to that? Okay, I don't see any. With that, Counsel Ringus, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. As to 2006-0 National Grid petition, I would move to perform gas leak and corrosion repairs on roadways at 14 Sterling Park with staff recommendations, noting them here, beld, there are no underground electric utility conflicts or special requirements within the proposed scope of work. Also from DPW, this section of this particular street is under the moratorium, having been paved in 2017. The following trench repair condition should apply to each petition's location. Temporary patches, all street excavations will be saw cut, backfilled and compacted in eight-inch lifts maximum, paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of four inches in two-inch lifts to match the existing street grade. Permanent patches, permanent patches shall be milled curb to curb for a length no less than 15 feet, centered on the temporary patch and machine laid at two inches of asphalt top course. Tac coat should be applied to milled surfaces and joints prior to paving. Finished joints should be treated with a rubberized asphalt sealer. All excavation work and temporary patching shall be completed prior to the November 15th, 2020, and all permanent patching shall take place between May 1st and May 31st of 2021. Any roadway striping that is disturbed must be replaced in kind. Lastly, if the petitions are so granted, National Grid should resubmit excavation permits to DPW Highway Division, so that the standard permit requirements can be applied. They also recommend the following requirements be added to the permit if it is so granted, including that neither National Grid nor any of its contractors is authorized to close any street or to close a direction of travel to facilitate their work without authorization from the Director of the Department of Public Works or the Highway Superintendent. The Chief of Police can also authorize a closer for a police or fire emergency. Construction zone traffic safety issues are to be addressed by using appropriate traffic control signs and devices and the use of police officers for traffic control to safely guide traffic through the work zone. If a closer is authorized by the DPW, it shall not be implemented until signs and police officers where needed are properly in place in conformity with a written plan prepared by the contractor's engineer and approved by the DPW and Police Department.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Clerk Samino. Counsel Ringus.
So these next will be included into one motion for one roll call vote. So as to 2006-1 National Grid petition, I'd move to perform gas leak and corrosion repairs on roadways at 79 Edgemont Road with staff recommendations, noting this section of Edgemont Road is under the moratorium, having been paved in 2019. As to 2006-2, to perform gas leak and corrosion repairs on roadways at Linden Street with staff recommendations, noting this section of Linden Street is under the moratorium, having been paved in 2015. As to 2003, to perform gas leak and corrosion repairs on roadways at 15 Hemlock Street with staff recommendations, noting this section of Hemlock Street is under the moratorium, having been paved in 2018. As to 2006-4, to perform gas leak and corrosion repairs on roadways at 49 Cotton Ave with staff recommendations, noting this section of Cotton Ave is under the moratorium, having been paved in 2019. As to 2006-5, to perform gas leak and corrosion repairs on roadways at 61 Birchcroft Road with staff recommendations, noting this section of Birchcroft Road is under the moratorium, having been paved in 2017. As to 2006-6, to perform gas leak and corrosion repairs on roadways at 59 Hancock Street with staff recommendation, noting this section of Hancock Street is under the moratorium, having been paved in 2019.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous, thank you all. Thank you, Counsel Ringus, for reading all those. Moving on to item 00220, the Council President Town Council Rules. At our April 7th, 2020 Town Council Meeting, a motion was made to Town Council Rule 23, suspensions of rules and suspend the 90-day rule and hold a vote to approve the revised Town Council Rules at an upcoming Town Council Meeting. At our last meeting, we took those rules. We heard from the Ordinance and Rules Chairman, Counsel Ringus, on their recommendations. We discussed it, there were some amendments put forward. Clerk Samino has taken all the additions from our last meeting, put them into the documents which you had all received with the agenda last week. If it's the will of this committee tonight, we can adopt these rules. Please note that our rules can be changed at any time. I know there's some other amendments that have been made after the rules were sent out last week. So what I would like us to do is let's address the rules that we all received in writing. And I will refer to you, Counsel Ringus, for your thoughts, or if you would like to add anything in addition to what was said last week.
Thank you, Madam President. As just sort of a rehash, and not taking overtime here, we had met kind of pre-COVID, the Ordinance and Rules Committee, on these council rules. And I would say that we took these rules through, I think, one of the more thorough reviews they've probably had since their sort of initiation back when this, with council started in 2008. We added rules, we deleted rules, we updated everything from headings on rules to make them more appropriate to the rule that was underneath them. We divided certain rules to make them more appropriate, and I think more user-friendly. We even went through and fixed grammar in some, in some ways. We tried to make all the language in here match. These rules are written in a very sort of plain language way, again, I think, to make them user-friendly, and we tried to make sure that each rule kept with that. I'm thankful to Counsel Sasha, Counselor Mackin, and Counsel Flaherty for all the work they've put in on this. Again, this was a series of meetings before we started shifting over to Zoom type with COVID. And then there was one additional meeting, once the COVID crisis started, that we did hold via Zoom, where we sort of approved these to go forward to the full council on a 4-0 vote. I think Counsel, I'm sorry, Clerk Samino has sort of prepared these rules, sent them forward to all of us. There have been, I know, various counselors who want to make some amendments to them. I know that, at the very least, Counsel Boerica has contacted me about some amendments, and I think we have those in our packet. Counsel O'Brien had some things he wanted to see possibly changed. I know that last week, Counsel Ryan, or a couple of weeks ago, Counsel Ryan had some issues about one of the, the changes we suggested in terms of council expenses. And I myself have a small amendment I would like to make on one of them. So I think we have, the rules that were presented last week was a 4-0 vote for Ordinance and Rules. It's kind of the will of the council at this point, whether we act on approving those, whether we look at some of these amendments or not. I would note that under the council rules themselves, they do have to be reviewed every two years, but we can amend them at any time. So that's sort of, I think it's the will of the council on exactly what we do here, whether we approve this, or we look at some of the amendments. And that's, that's not my decision to make.
Thank you, Counsel. Clerk Samino, can you pull up the rules as they were presented to the counselors in the, in our recent agenda, this agenda?
One more screen. Second, let's see.
Okay, well, so does, well, Clerk Samino does that. Counsel O'Brien, you had your hand raised. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the Committee, the Ordinance and Rules Committee, because I know this is, as was stated by the Chair, an extensive exhaustive review. Unfortunately, COVID got in the way, which slowed things down, modified things, et cetera. But I just, in light of what I just heard, initially, I was thinking, when you opened this, Madam Chair, that similar to what was just mentioned, let's just go ahead and get this over with, and we can modify it. But with all due respect, I just think there's way too many changes that, that have been requested. I have an extensive one in my Rule 59, which I will briefly momentarily lobby for, and then I'm going to make a suggestion. And I'm only going to make a suggestion without mentioning the T-A-B-L-E word. But my 59 is because-
Let me just interrupt you. I didn't say we were voting on this. It's up to the will of the Committee whether we vote. We can, we can vote and adopt it as presented and make amendments later. So that's that.
But if I could just finish my statement on 59?
Go ahead.
Thank you, the council, this council and its predecessors have often been provided input at the very last minute by the executive branch. I'll give you an example tonight, and I'll stop lobbying for it. But if we look at 2006-0 through 2006-6, just tonight, the members of DPW were provided updates relative to leaks just this morning at 10 o'clock. And on 2006-7, we were just provided the information for that 2006-7 that's going to be referred. The 2006-7, I'm not so bad with. My point here is, I believe there's a need for a Rule 59 or something similar to that. You can all object to it, but just to make sure that we have the documentation that we need when the filing happens, not an hour before we're coming into sessions, whether it be a committee or otherwise, but when the filing actually happens. And so I'll get off my high horse, but I really think this should go back to ONR, because I think there's too many things that are requested. And I did not make myself available to ONR, so shame on me, but I will this time if it, it's the will of the people.
Thank you, Counsel O'Brien. Counsel Mackin, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess this would be a process question for this. You know, this is a lengthy document. You know, we did review it and put it together, but as it's come up, you know, there are many amendments that go along, and likely some that will, likely keep coming up, and items we might debate on. Do we try to get one thing finalized and vote on it? Because that seems like that may not happen for a little while. Or, you know, what's the best way to go forward with this?
It is up to the Committee. If we choose to vote on this tonight as presented, we can. Then, like any other vote, if amendments are brought forward to the table, we can do that. It's, again, it's up, it's up to us, the council, how we want to do it. If, if we want to send it back to the Committee, we can do that as well.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Hold on, Counsel O'Brien. Go ahead, Mr. Mackin.
I'm good, I'm good.
Counsel Mackin, sorry. You're good? Counsel Ringus, then I'll come back to you, O'Brien.
I think Counsel O'Brien was just gonna, I think he, I think he was going to make the motion I was going to suggest, so I kind of jumped over him there. But, you know, it was something I didn't want to necessarily do in terms of, I don't like when a committee makes a referral, it comes out to council, and then we refer back. I think, you know, if a, if a committee generally does their work and pushes it forward, it can always be changed at the full council. But just based, I think, on the sheer volume of some of these amendments, it might make sense actually to refer it back to Ordinance and Rules, and we can look at some of these. That way, if, you know, certain counselors wanted to come before us or provide additional documentation, it might make a lot more sense to do it that way than for us to sit here and pick through. I think I have maybe nine pages of stuff in front of me here right now. So I think it might make more sense to refer it back to ONR.
Second.
Was that what you were going to say, Counsel O'Brien? My apologies for that.
Apologize, absolutely.
All right, there's been a motion made and seconded to refer this back to Ordinance and Rules. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Connors?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
I do apologize, ONR, but aye.
Counsel Ringus?
No apology needed.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Counsel Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, that is unanimous, and it's going back to Ordinance and Rules. I do think this is the best decision, because as was stated, there were multiple, multiple amendments. And once amendments are presented, this particular type of conversation is hard to do via Zoom. I know we have a stack of probably almost half an inch of paper with the original rules, then the changes, and then more changes. then the changes, and then more changes. And so I think this is the prudent thing to do. I appreciate the motion, Counsel Ringus and Counsel O'Brien. Counsel O'Brien, you have your hand raised.
Just one last appreciation to Clerk Samino, because, man, I'm putting her through the mill, and I know everybody else is as well. So thank you, Clerk Samino.
You're welcome.
Okay, and bear with me, because I lost a piece of paper in my piles of rules. Okay. Okay, with that, there was no new business. We are moving on to referral to the Committee of Ways and Means. Item 2006-7, the mayor requests to approve the grant of a conservation restriction to the Wetlands Trust, or take up any action relative there to. Counsel Ringus.
I would move to refer that to Committee of Ways and Means.
Second.
It's been a mo, sorry, I read your motion. Motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume. Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. And we are moving on. Our next meeting is Tuesday, October 6th, at 7:30. We probably still will be meeting via Zoom. I want to thank B.C. and all those in attendance. I thank the members of DPW, Ways and Means, who had a great deal of work in their subcommittees to address all the issues at hand tonight. I thank you to everybody who is in attendance and watching at home. And again, as always, thank you to Steve Leary for making this all happen and function properly, and bringing our meetings out to the publics. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
All in favor?
You, Clerk Samino, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
Good night, everybody.